I will call this meeting to the actual county commission order. It will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Ian Jackie, reading the minutes from our last meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jackie.
The county commission of Upshur County, Ushkenee Junior held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, January 15, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner Troy Brady, Commissioner Terry Cutright, Kelly Cunningham, County Administrator, and Jacqueline Denkhalker, Secretary. Meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of January 8, 2015 as admitted. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the job description of the animal control slash humane officer. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the job description of the Upshur County Commission's Assistant Administrator. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the job description of the E-911 telecommunicator dispatcher. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the job description of the E-911 communications supervisor. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the job description of the E-911 communications director. And after discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the E-911 Upshur County Communications Center Security Bulletin, Mobile Device Management dated January 15, 2015. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the resignation of Brittany Hornbeck as Park V clerk effective January 8, 2015. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the 2015 standard mileage rates. Beginning on January 1, 2015, the standard mileage rates of the use of a car, van, pickup, or panel truck will be 57.5 cents per mile for business miles driven, up from 56 cents in 2014. Note, Cutright and Rafferty, yes. Brady, no. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady... Okay, typo. The commission approved and authorized the president to sign correspondence to the office of the Upshur County Assessor and the Property Tax Division of the State Tax Department giving authorization to correct valuations for real property, personal property, and/or mineral accounts. Any adjustments made after January 29, 2015 must be forwarded to the commission sitting as the Board of Review and Equalization. J.C. Rafferty reviewed correspondence from Gregory Harris, Upshur County Safe Structures and Sites Order Enforcement Board Representative, requesting the commission to take action concerning case number 061214-02, requiring cleanup of the referenced property. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign and send correspondence to the property owner requested. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following for your information items. Number one, correspondence from Sergeant S.M. Ettry, West Virginia State Police regarding the satisfactory onsite weapon audit of the Upshur County E-911 Center. Number two, Upshur County E-911 Communications Center report, December 2014, as listed. Three, Upshur County Doc report, December 2014. Four, agendas and or notes of meetings, as listed. Five, meeting minutes, as listed. Six, meetings, as listed. Seven, Board of Equalization and Review, as listed. Schedule. Appointments needed or upcoming, as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements, as listed. The commission approved the following considerations and/or refunds, as listed. Craig Presar, WBU Extension Service, Upshur County Office, Program Coordinator/Youth Development, appeared before the commission and provided an update of services and programs and introduced new staff members. Debbie Carolisle, Reception/Administration. Abby Jo Golden, Voyage Coordinator. Natasha Harris, Agriculture and Natural Resources Extension Agent, have assumed the duties of longtime employees Gary Rafferty, Megan Shiftblin, and Jill Bentley, who all retired last year with over 60 years of providing experience. Mr. Presar said that although the agency has lost institutional memories, that is a quote, he is encouraged about the future and looking forward to trying new things. Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Center Director, appeared before the commission and requested to meet an executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 to discuss personnel issues. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission entered into executive session at 10:00 a.m. Present were J.C. Rafferty, Troy Brady, Terry Cutright, Kelly Cunningham, and Steve Linger. The commission returned to open session at 10:30 a.m. No decisions were made in the executive session. E-911 Communications Center dispatchers Cecilia Stewart, Carol Dean, Michelle Mackey, Stephanie Jack, Randy Walton, Ashley McMillan, and Kami Markwood appeared before the commission to discuss personnel matters. Steve Linger requested that they meet in an executive session. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission entered executive session at 10:30 a.m. For West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. Present were J.C. Rafferty, Troy Brady, Terry Cutright, Kelly Cunningham, and dispatchers as follows individually. Cecilia Stewart, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:00. Carol Dean, from 11:00 to 11:20. Michelle Mackey, from 11:20 to 11:30. Stephanie Jack, from 11:30 to 12:00 p.m. Brady Walton, from 12:13 p.m. to 12:40. Ashley McMillan, from 12:40 to 1:15. And Kami Markwood, from 1:15 to 1:55 p.m. The commission returned open session at 2:45 p.m. No decisions were made in the executive session. Commissioner Brady advised that the department supervisors and the Police Policy Board meetings were canceled due to executive session meetings. Mary Stern, West Virginia Tax Department Auditor, appeared before the commission and provided an exit interview. Ms. Stern advised that her report cited only two findings: segregation of duties and casualty funds slash change in the office of the county clerk. The first segregation of duties was due to the number of employees would not have a resolution. Debbie Thacker, Wilfong, Upshur County Clerk, questions how other departments slash counties deal with the issue of getting change for checks written for amounts over and above fees charged. Ms. Stern advised that some counties maintain a separate refund account for making change. Ms. Wilfong stated that because of extra bookkeeping, that solution would not be practical. Ms. Stern advised that the county was not required to fix the problem, but that it would continue to be cited in the future audit reports as long as it continues to occur. But now for the business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission meeting adjourned at 3:15.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as read other than that which Jackie corrected during her reading of the minutes? If not, I'd request a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye. All the same, sign motion carries. Thank you, Jackie. We have a number of individuals appearing before the commission starting at 9:15, about five more minutes. So I'll go down to the approval block items for discussion, action, or approval. First, we have the approval of Karen G. Silence as volunteer in the Sheriff's Tax Office. Do you have a motion to approve that individual as a volunteer?
I'm moving.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All the same, sign motion carries.
J.C., before you act on item number two, because you wait until after your executive session with Dave Godwin.
Okay. Next item number three, the resignation of John Slatter, Animal Control Officer, effective January 27, 2015. Do you have a motion to that effect?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye. All the same, sign motion carries. Number four, approved resolution for Upshur County Development Authority for LED grant, located on page five. It is a resolution basically identifying the Upshur County Development Authority as the participation for the county in the LED grant. A motion to approve that part of the mission, which required the signature of myself and Debbie Thacker Wilfong.
I'm moving to approve that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All the same, sign motion carries. Next, we have a request from Terry Reed to serve another term on the Upshur County Building Commission. There is a letter attached which reflects his request to serve an additional five years. Do you have a motion on that request?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye. All the same, sign motion carries. Next, we have approval of guidelines for removal of road name and 911 dressing mapping project, located on pages seven through nine. This sets forth the methodology that the county will use for those individuals wishing to change the names of the roads that had been designated previously utilizing the mapping addressing formula that was provided us by the state.
And she said I could get her if you need her, but it's actually for the removal of a road name. And actually, what I think occurred previously was there were a couple, like, I think it was really driveways that got named. And that didn't exactly work. So they can come in, this is allowing them to come in and do that if they want to remove that name.
Well, we had, I think it was a two-year moratorium on changing names, probably just to make sure that it was, things went down smoothly. If someone wishes to have their name changed, they have to have, I think it's 80% of the road. People of owned property along the road have just signed a petition. And there are some expenses involved. Having realized yourself with that petition requirement, do I have a motion to adopt those guidelines?
So moved, second.
Have you moved and seconded? All in favor, say aye. All the same, sign motion carries. It is now 9:15. And we have Bryson Van Mauser to make an appearance before the commission relative to the Heart Program and request a letter of support from the county commission. Bryson? There's the podium.
So officials.
Too close to us. I mean, today's a world of security. We've got to keep a little bit away from the commission.
I haven't met Mr. Kirby yet.
It's Terry Cutright, as is the commissioner.
So I have to admit, I feel kind of funny asking for this particular topic. You all are covering some serious business matters this morning.
Well, I think yours is a serious business matter.
So what I am here today to ask you all to help with is to get a program started here in the community related to placing permanent artworks throughout the town. And it's just a project that I have seen happen in many towns and cities in West Virginia and around the country, around the world. And I think that it would add to our quality of living here to have some public art in our public spaces. So the hope is that, what I'm hoping to get off the ground, and I think it is off the ground, is a program, a comprehensive plan from St. Joe's to Westland to including county organizations, city organizations, the Board of Education, where those are the key five organizations here in the city, or the community that I see. My hope is that all five will want this, to be willing to be part of this program. And at this point, Creative Buchanan, I think, is probably going to be the hook, like, the primary group of people that I would be involved with to kind of push this forward. I will admit that I have asked the city unofficially to consider them having the primary role as opposed to Creative Buchanan. The thought is that, from the individual property owner and Creative Buchanan and private organizations and businesses, that we would be able to raise the monies to pay for these permanent art installations. As a, I mean, let's say, a good example, if you're out in front of the courthouse, you all, as the county commission, on the premier corner, the most important corner in the main street of Buchanan landscape. If I was a visitor coming to town and I saw a piece of art at the corner of the intersection, that would mean something to me as far as what this community, what our values are, let's say. Now, I know that, again, based on all these discussions this morning about business matters, art is sometimes the last thing to be considered. Certainly, it's, I guess, some would call it a need, some would call it purely an extravagance or an extra. I personally believe that we need more art in this world of all kinds. It's music, it is performance, anything, sculpture, whatever. And so my hope here is that we would have a community-wide approval and support of the project. Once we've got letters of support from every organization as well as businesses, then that will then be our packet of information where we're going to be asking for monies, grant monies, as well as private donations. I mean, myself included, and many business owners here in town. I mean, there are some key industries here in Buchanan that we hope to get involved in this process too. I have just tentatively just suggested that we would locate 50 places here in Buchanan and the community that could be suited for public art. I have, really, in fact, you are the last organization that I've been able to app, make this request to. I met with the city, mayor, and others, actually. I have a letter of support from the city, or, well, from the mayor, already. I met with St. Joe's Hospital, and they have a letter. Their board has approved a letter of support for this project. I have met with the superintendent of schools. He plans to bring this up to his board next week. Let's see, who else? Westland, of course, I met with the president and vice president, I had some. Of course, Westland's art department would play a major role with their art training faculty as well as their students. Westland has a, Westland is hosting the Governor's School of the Arts program in the summer of this, of '15, which is almost a month-long intensive arts program of high school students from around the state that come here. And so there's going to be quite an intense number of people, kids, and, in fact, and artists at Westland's campus this summer. And we were hopeful that one of the products of that will be the permanent art facilities on Westland's campus. Westland is also going to host the Governor's School of the Arts again in '16. So we hope that another piece will come in '16. So St. Joe's, as an example, has, they have some public art outside. They have some sculptures and pieces that are already there. And we have some here in Buchanan, I have a lot of art around, but no one really necessarily knows where they are. I would hope, again, thinking just purely from a hip kind of thing, I thought, well, let's just shoot for 50 places to identify. And we're just beginning the process of trying to find those 50 locations across the community. To me, that if we have 50 places, that probably means we have 50 artists involved to some degree. And as far as artist recruitment, we're thinking we're going to try to find as many local Upshur County as well as West Virginia-based artists to try to support the local artist community as much as we can. And I think it's absolutely reasonable that we're bringing artists from outstate to do, to design and build pieces of art. So it seemed to me that the strength of this idea was that it be a community-wide program. That, you know, when the president of Westland is thinking about installing some art, that she's thinking about, well, she's fitting in to this 50-group matrix of all these other projects. I have to say, well, just as a comment about art in general, I think you can always find, there's good art and there's maybe not good art, right? I mean, there's a lot of different.
It's not going to be holders, they say.
Indeed. And so I want to say that we really can't, well, let's say with a particular location, let's say with your location, or, the county, I assume, has multiple locations. But let's just talk about this in front of the courthouse. If the county supports this program, absolutely, we're going to ask permission to place a piece of art on this corner. I want to, naturally, this letter of support that I'm asking for today in no way obligates the county to do anything. But what we would do then, we as a group, and I guess right now it's being led by me, but other interested creative art artistic people, would bring to you a proposal and say, here's what we would like to install here. This is what it would look like. So you, as the commission, would not be signing off on anything. Then you wouldn't know what the final product is. And I'll be first to point out that no organization in this community is going to want to support controversial art. That it's, we are certainly looking for art that makes people smile, that doesn't necessarily bring up harsh social issues or whatever that there may be, which many urban centers certainly have. So I don't want to say that we're looking for just happy art, but I want to tell you that we would not bring to you a proposal that, at least in our eyes, would consider to be considered controversial.
That would be your attempt.
Certainly. And then the big question which everyone asks is financing. You know, are you, if you write a letter of support, are you committing financing? The answer is definitely no. I would say every property owner that we're going to, that will be involved in this process, from Westland, St. Joe's, the city, everybody, even myself, on my own property and others here, and to other business owners, property owners here in town, I think the property owner will be the first one asked. Can you support, can you offer any money to help make this happen? And if that property owner can, that's great. I mean, whatever remaining funds are left, then it'd be up to the Creative Buchanan Group and private donations, et cetera, to raise the money to make it happen. So I think it's very possible. I mean, we're going to be asking for grant money from steady sources as well as private foundations. You know, it's hard to say how lucky we'll be. But I think that our success of getting funds is going to be certainly increased, the likelihood is going to be increased if it's a community-wide program or basically everyone in the community wants to be involved and wants to be, and is willing to support it in the concept. And I know that the school board is, or this town is very excited about trying to get some of their students involved in making pieces. Certainly, I know the college of Westland is also excited about that opportunity with their own students. So at the end of the day, I think this is, it's just a nice thing that could really make a difference as far as an outward expression of our values. And I know that there are folks in this town that struggle to recruit people to Buchanan, looking for jobs, you know, folks to come and teach or work. I think, I think there's some intangible benefits of having art in public places. It's hard to define exactly what's the direct benefit here, but I believe in it. And there will be more art here regardless of whether or not this is a community-wide program. It'll just be one-off opportunities where someone puts a mural on a building or someone installs something here. But I think if it's a community-wide effort, it's going to be great. And doing research, which I've done a whole lot of research from other cities and towns, I can say that Charleston has an outside the public arts program. They have somewhere in the neighborhood of 45 pieces throughout the city that they've identified and mapped in a guide that tourists and visitors get and receive to find all the public art pieces in our town. And I think that Buchanan absolutely should have the same thing.
Would this be permanent art?
Well, the difference between permanent and temporary is a difficult discussion because you can, I mean, bronze, granite, those are the most permanent materials that I know of. And they're the most expensive. I, there are a lot of art projects around the country that are very temporary, that go up for four, five months and then come down. And I have to say that I think that's a very expensive kind of art. I love it, but the cost of getting, I mean, let's say we built something here in front of the courthouse and then, or installed a piece of sculpture, let's say, and then next year decided to do it again, or take it down, do something else. Obviously, that's going to be very expensive. There are a lot of programs, maybe you all have heard of the cow parade, which was a temporary art installation that started in Switzerland and then to New York, Charlotte, it's just been around the country, where fiberglass life-size cattle are being made upwards of, you know, 100 or more in the city. An individual artist paints and decorates and does whatever to that cow. And then the cow gets temporarily installed in the sidewalk or someplace all around the city. Folks love it. They stay up for a few months. And then at the end, they're auctioned off and the proceeds go to the city. And it's just wonderful. The public loves it. And so if we could have a temporary art installation like that, I think that'd be wonderful. I don't know as far as the initial beginnings of the project. I think I'm leaning a little bit more towards relatively permanent installations that could last up to 10 years or more. And, I mean, a mural on a wall, for example, could be there for a long time. But I think with all property owners, we'll have to draft, you know, some type of legal agreement, you know, for every installation because there's going to be obviously monies expended and efforts. And right now, it's not totally clear, but I think that there will be an organization that has to ensure these properties, the art. Let's say that all art, I mean, every property owner will have the right to say, I want this off my property. I don't want it here anymore. It's in the way. Either we're going to build something, or a lot of the community members are mad, don't like it, or, you know, whatever it could be. But the concept of reversibility will absolutely be there. There will be no easement, like, there will be no deed of property in any way. I think it would really just be basically a permission agreement to say, we're going to let you put this on our property. And then if we want it removed at any time in the future, you're going to remove it. I mean, the is a property owner, that's what I would want. I wouldn't want to be locked in to any kind of permanent commitment. Now, the city, you know, if the city chooses to finance some permanent artwork, you know, that would probably be a different story, but I don't know. I guess, but reversibility, I think, is absolutely essential to getting everyone to buy into the concept. And of course, right now, I mean, Westland, like, we're talking about maybe five pieces across the Westland's campus right now. We've begun the process of trying to determine the most, the best places for that. But I think, yeah, on the River Trail is a great place. Lots of folks walk down there. It's kind of a serene landscape park-like atmosphere, so it's a perfect place. Also, I think downtown here would be great too. I mean, I, you know, a piece of, I mean, there's obviously a wide range of artistic styles. And, you know, if a person happens to come to this community and they're driving down Main Street and they see a piece of modern art, it might grab their attention, you know, in a good way. And so, you know, of course, these small towns all are filled with very traditional architecture and form, so there isn't much modern design. architecture and form, so there isn't much modern design of any elements, you know, in these small towns here in West Virginia, for sure. So I think something a little more contemporary and colorful would be, could have some good benefits for us. So today, my, I would love to present to you a more detailed presentation of examples of art. I mean, I have that, and anytime, not in this forum, but anytime that you all would be willing, I would love to do that, just to show you all the different things that are happening around the world, and what real examples, I think, would probably be workable here at Buchanan. So what I'm requesting today is, in effect, is nothing more than a general blessing of the commission thinking that this could be good for the community. And I think this is easily, this is a multi-year project that I think could be a ten-year program to get it fully implemented. You know, who knows? Maybe in ten years, we can put another fifty locations around. And it's hard to say what, how it would grow, but I'm really excited about trying to get all these, I mean, it can't just be my project and my idea, but I'm really excited to get individual organizations and people within their organizations excited about, and taking it to a different level. So I don't know where it's going, but we got to start with this pack, this package of support, a map of the town with the properties located, and then begin the arts recruitment process, and hopefully some grant applications.
Well, Bryson, I think anyone familiar with you, the architect firm, of course, knows of your support for the arts, your art co-op that was started a number of years ago. And I appreciate you coming before us. I would request that maybe you speak with Carrie to get together the format of such a communication that she can present to us for consideration. I, for one, would support such, I mean, I can't speak for the commissioners, but I would certainly support such a letter. Would that be the best way to handle it?
Well, you, I believe, need to vote on if you are willing to do the letter.
Well, at this current meeting or a future meeting?
Yeah, because she can't prepare any letter for you if you don't push to have her do it.
Well, do I have a motion to support the submission of a letter presumably to Bryson in support of this project that he's presented to us?
I'm going to, by the way, I'm supporting.
Okay, here's your second to that motion. I'll, in favor, say aye. I oppose, say aye. Sign me. Have your letter.
Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
You have a good day, sir.
I hope the rest of the day is easy.
I do, too. Thank you, Bryson. Well, it's a little bit past nine-thirty, but we have scheduled nine-thirty Barbara Kincaid to appear before the commission, representing the Central West Virginia Center for Pregnancy Care, and she will review the services offered by that agency.
Yes, I take it everywhere I go.
Wow. Yeah. What was that, the cartoon, Baby Ew, remember Baby Ew, Big Duck? That was about his size. That was about his size.
I take it wherever I go.
Please take it with you, will you?
Oh, goodness, okay. Our series next. I am Barbara Kincaid. I'm a licensed social worker here in the state of West Virginia. And I work currently two agencies, the St. George Medical Clinic, as I'm a social worker there in Tucker County. But I've also been the director and consultant for the Central West Virginia Center for Pregnancy Care for the past ten years. The center's been here in Buchanan since nineteen ninety-nine. It was started in nineteen eighty-five in Weston by, well, Dr. Sneed and Charlotte Sneed. Dr. Sneed's the orthopedic surgeon in Weston. So there was a passion here for women who may have struggled either financially, decision-making, through domestic violence, through a numerous amount of lack of support, is what I'm kind of talking about today. But it's just mainly to bring forward to you all today about the awareness here. We have, I have been here, again, ten years here in Buchanan. We have, wow, wow, the last probably two years, we have enrolled probably over two-hundred women, and not only from Upsher County, but from the surrounding counties. We serve nine counties in the state of West Virginia. So we have a huge amount of area that we cover. We do home visits. I teach parenting classes. We do this on a very limited budget. And so, of course, I do the fundraising, I do whatever it is, the presentations that I can. We have three centers right now. We have two centers in Tucker County, one up in Thomas, one in Parsons, we have one in Weston. So we continuously try to provide these services. And of course, in our community here, wow, I don't know how many, my secretary, this is Tracy Gould, she just been hired, so we go through a lot of issues on a day-to-day basis. One of those, of course, means is the funding. But what I mainly wanted to talk to you about today is the fact that what we do provide, which is a unique service, we work directly with DHHR. They will send women to us quite often for baby beds, car seats, pack-and-plays, diapers, maternity clothes, onesies, you name it, they bring it to us. I work directly with the Right From the Start program, Birth to Three program. So we're very much involved with the community as far as what we provide. And we do provide a unique service, which is, you know, helping the young girls, teenage girls, who find themselves pregnant, not sure what to do. We offer that services through supportive counseling. We do a lot of referrals out into the community for counseling and for the rest of whatever they may need. Housing, we work with the housing, so, I mean, we've put up Moms at Colonial, the hotel. We have worked with, again, with domestic violence, with, you know, the women's dating crisis. So we provide a whole big range of services, and mainly to let, you know, again, the city know what it is that we actually do and provide on a very limited budget. Of course, we're always looking for that resources, for that money, that we can help buy car seats. We have phone calls from St. Joseph Hospital, DM Hospital, for car seats, because they will not let the mom come out of the hospital unless they have a car seat. You know, we work with the police department here to see if they have any. So we kind of find every avenue we can. The other is, the West Virginia Classic Car Club supports us, has kind of adopted us as an agency, and when they do their fundraising, then they offer us a five-hundred, excuse me, a five-hundred-dollar check so that we can buy the new car seats, because we can no longer give away used, used or any of those. When I started ten years ago, there wasn't a problem, but now with the liability, we do not have that option at all now to give away these furniture. Our moms don't have access sometimes to a baby bed. So, you know, these are the new items that we try to provide, again, for our moms, and this kind of represents the emptiness sometimes that our moms feel. We have access to World Vision. So if we go to World Vision, sometimes we do get formula. Sometimes they run out with, you know, it's a certain amount allotment, but they run out by the end of the month, they come to us for their formula, which we normally get, you know, through World Vision. And so, you know, we're very, very lucky on those aspects, that we have really, you know, went out beyond looking for the resources that we need. But we also provide a lot of service, I think, to, you know, our community in itself. You know, we're on the Domino's magnet. We have had the billboard out at the high school for the young kids that come through the high school finding themselves pregnant. I can go to the schools as a social worker, I'm invited in many times to come and talk about teen pregnancies, the STD. I've been to Gilmore County, Tucker County, Upsher County, so I have tried to be, you know, a part of this community as well as bringing them in. I have a brief letter from one of the moms, and she asked me that, you know, not to, of course, give her name, but to just kind of let you know how important these services are. She found herself pregnant in two thousand and twelve. She had a lot of medical conditions. Things were really tough for her. She didn't know what to do, but she came to our center, and through the referrals that we do, making sure of what decisions she's trying to make, is it, is it the one that she can provide for herself and for her child? Her husband walked out on her, left her. She had no means of taking care of herself, and again, you know, things were pretty rough for her. She's not from this county, she's from another county. And I made a phone call to the Central Pregnancy Center, spoke to Barb. She agreed to meet with me that day, I assumed by myself, pointing out my whole situation for her for hours. She consulted me, we cried together, and we talked about the future. But most of all, you know, again, we offer that support. I decided that day that I would do the best that I could with my child that I was carrying, and I left the Pregnancy Center. She talks about, again, she had an ultrasound, things were not very good at that time, but because we offered that support for her, she felt that she wasn't alone. And then she talks about, I don't know where I'd be today if I had followed through the instructions, if it hadn't been for the Pregnancy Center who supported me through other resources that we had in this county. She talks about, looking back, not only did they help her, we helped her with her pregnancy, but we also helped her with her life, and now, today, she's doing very well. Her baby is soon to be three years old, so, you know, and she is thriving and doing very well. The mother is also doing very well. So we just wanted to let you know what an impact that our center is doing. I don't know if I ever spoke before in front of the commissioners.
I believe you did.
Long time you did.
It must have been three or four years.
Yeah.
It's been, oh, three years.
Right. Of course, we've had to move a few times, and we've probably seen in the red dot that we moved again. And that's a nice thing, is we've tried to find a secure place in our town to provide these services. But South Buchanan Mission Church, you've probably read the newspaper, provided us with a building that they had remodeled, and so we're just getting into it and getting things in order. But, but again, it's just an idea that if there is any monies, or if there's any grant monies that we could obtain to get the baby furniture, the, you know, the items that are desperately needed, that would be great. Again, my budget is about thirty-six thousand dollars a year that we provide the services with in the nine-county area. So, you know, we try to use the newspaper for our advertisement, and, you know, try to support our local community as well with what resources we do have available, so.
Well, the march will be putting our budget together for the entire county. We had a very lean, lean year last year. We were down, I think it was four hundred thousand dollars. But as terms of grants, you might want to speak with Carrie, because she may be able to assist you in obtaining some grant information.
That would be great.
But other than that, we can consider during our budget proceeding.
And does it matter what the amount is? I mean, you know...
Well, it always matters what the amount is.
It does matter. You know, we have some that we're solely provided with right now, you know, with our churches and private donations, and United Way, Upsher, and Lewis County does help us every year. And let me tell you, that does go a very long way, so, but thank you.
Well, thank you for your parents and your description of the services they offer.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
One minute will be nine forty-five. We have Sheila Adams from the Sheriff's Tax Department.
Our tax office.
I suspect Sheila, you can go up there when you're ready. It's close enough. It's actually about thirty seconds away. Good morning, Sheila.
And here to present the final disposition list for the real estate taxes. Let's not just go through that process. Back in May, we presented a delinquent list, and at that time, it had delinquent real estate and personal property taxes on it. The total of the delinquencies for the real estate were approximately one hundred and seventeen thousand. Since that time, we have advertised them again according to state code. They get advertised again in September. And we advertise those three times to allow people to have additional notice. We send certified mailings to each one of those individuals, letting them know that their taxes are delinquent. And then we have a land sale November the nineteenth. And from the time of May till before the land sale, there were three hundred and seventy-eight thousand taxes that were redeemed, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in taxes. Redeems means they paid before the sale. We had seventy-two properties that were suspended to the state. Those totaled approximately nineteen thousand six hundred. We had a large sale this year. We had a hundred and eighty-six properties that went to a housing sale. Most of those properties were one large customer who has a lot of properties. It's the largest sale that we've had since I've been here. I've been here almost eighteen years. A hundred and six of those tickets totaled sixty-two hundred dollars. Those had tax liens that were sold to the state. That means they didn't have a bid from an individual purchase that had the sale. And so those went down to the state. The state will hold those for eighteen months if those folks do not redeem them during that time. It's important for people to understand, they can still redeem those properties from the state and get their properties back. It is important to do that as quickly as possible, because the longer they wait, the more the costs go up. We also had eighty tickets that totaled thirteen thousand four hundred, and those tickets were sold to individuals. Those are our purchasers that come to the tax lien sale. And what happens when they did those properties in, that allows us to keep them on the tax rolls, and it enables the lending bodies to continue to be able to get those tax dollars in. So that is an important process, but it's also important to note to the citizens who have had a tax lien sold against their property, they can still get that property back before it goes to the deeding process. Those are also held for eighteen months, and you can contact the auditor's office and give them the information about your property. If you do not have the information about your property, we will be more than happy to assist them downstairs. We've already helped several people this year, giving them the information. The state auditor's office in the Land Division is where you redeem those, and I have a number for the press, it's one eight 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 five oh nine six five six eight, and they can contact them to redeem their properties. Do you have any questions?
The total amount you generated from the sale of, or from the, was how much again?
Well, we sold eighty at the sale to individuals. The face value of those tickets was thirteen thousand four hundred. That doesn't include the surplus. We did advertise our sale in the paper, and there is a misconception on the part of the taxpayers, the landowners, thinking that they have to come up with that amount of money. If your taxes were a hundred dollars and the bid price for that property was two thousand, you do not have to pay two thousand dollars to redeem your property to get it back. You have to pay the taxes, fees, interest, and cost that the purchaser paid. They get their surplus back.
Do you have to pay an interest to the purchaser?
They do. It's, the last I knew of, unless it changes, about one percent.
Can you give us an percentage of the, you know, tax figure based on the assessment? Can you tell us the percentage of people who complied with paying their property taxes? Is that possible? Is any of that information available?
Well, I didn't bring that with me today. It's less than one percent.
So you have a ninety-nine percent collection rate?
Yeah, because of the sale, because you only had nineteen thousand six hundred that went to the, to the state for the suspensions. Suspensions get redeemed, but they don't get redeemed as often as the other ones. And then we had the other ones that were sold to the state.
Right.
And that was sixty-two hundred, so, so it's less than one percent.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Biden?
I just want to thank her for going.
I'd just like to thank her for doing outstanding job.
I do as well. Thank you very much, Sheila. Thank you, Sheriff. You're welcome. Yeah. Okay, the next appointment is at 10 o'clock, so we got a few minutes left, so we'll continue down with the free information items. We have the Upshur County Cat Report for December 2014. We have the Upshur County Sheriff's Financial Statement for period ending December 2014. And we have correspondence from the Department of Health and Human Resources regarding Energy Assistance Program for Low-Income Residents, that's on page 13 or 14. And it gives the formula to determine, depending on the size of the household, for the amount of money eligibility, income eligibility for participation in the program. There's a depressor identifying that possibly in any article we compare. We have meeting minutes for the Elkins, Elkins Road Economic Service District. We have meetings, date of, for the review equalization meeting schedule, appointments necessary for various boards. And again, we will be sitting as a Board of Equalization Review, Review Equalization, excuse me, beginning at 10 o'clock on the 29th of this month, January. We'll be here at the courthouse and shall continue until the work is complete or adjourned or later, and they close the business on the 19th day of February 2015. Still have a few more minutes. We'd like to take a short recess to, we'll now reconvene. Our next appointment, 10 o'clock, is Laura Ward, Country Roads Transit, will give us an annual report.
Hello, how are you?
Good morning.
How are you?
We try to visit every year and say, "Thank you again for supporting Country Roads Transit." Country Roads Transit keeps growing, little by little by little, through partnerships, through community, helping with other community events. So, Country Roads Transit in Upshur County has never had the problem of Upshur County residents understanding that we have a ride for everyone. We battle that in Randolph County because we're housed out of the senior center. But we are very happy that we have now six months under our belt, nearly seven, in our partnership with the Upshur County Senior Center.
Right.
And I'm going to talk about that a little bit, but first I want to talk about one fiscal year versus the other. So, the current fiscal year is 2015. I'm still reporting to you on the 2014 fiscal year, which ended in July. We had an 11% increase in that year versus the year before.
That's in ridership.
That's in ridership, yes, a number of rides given. It remains strong in, in folks who go for medical appointments, folks who go for shopping. These are people who have no other way to get to those vital services, and that's the importance of Country Roads Transit to the citizens of Upshur County. I'm tickled to death to tell you that this year in 2015, this partnership with the Upshur County Senior Center has grown and grown and grown. We had a theory that if we combined our resources, we could do more together than we could individually, and I believe that's what's happening. We have, we partnered with them starting July 1st. We have, if you, if you combine their ridership from the six months before and our ridership from this, from the six months last year, we are maintaining ridership at this increased 11% level, okay? We have started a loop around, around Buchanan. Seniors ride that loop for free. That is part of the investment from the Upshur County Senior Center. We also give the seniors who don't live along that route or need to go to a destination not along that route, a certain value of demand response rides a month for free. That's going really well. As with any change, you know, you have a little, a little bumps in the beginning, and we had to, we came over and spoke a lot to the seniors and said, "We want to, we want you to tell us when you have a question or a problem." And we've managed to iron all those out, and I think it's been very successful. The thing I want you to understand is that we've taken your investment, the city's investment and the senior center's investment. That senior center investment, we've turned into more than just added value for seniors. We've turned that into added value for every resident of Upshur County. We had one van operating here before, demand response only. We now have three vans all the time, two demand response, and we have one on the loop. Anyone can ride any of those vans. Demand response is a call away. Call us the day before, tell us where you need to go, and we'll get you there. The loop goes seven times a day, so you can count on us. You can flag us down at any point on that route and, and continue along the route and go to Walmart, anywhere you need to go. Goes to Walmart, it goes past St. Joseph's, goes past grocery stores, post office, goes right by your courthouse, I'm happy to say. And, and that's what we're so proud of this year. We, we keep looking for avenues to increase the service with the same investment that we had before. I know that, that because you're fiscally responsible gentlemen here and taking care of the citizens of Upshur County, that last year, we saw a decrease by 50% of what we had been funded before.
Do you have matching funds for whatever we do provide you, you have matching funds?
Yes, yes. So, so previously, you were, you were good enough to give us $20,000 in funding. Last year, we saw $10,000, we appreciate that. I know in hard financial times, you have to make hard decisions. I hope that you can continue the funding this year. My request is going to be for the $20,000 because I have, you know, high hopes for, for transit, and it gets hard as, right now, we're seeing a decrease in fuel, but that isn't always the case. Minimum wage went up, I know, so costs continue to increase. Providing the same service for the same money make, is, is a difficult thing to do. So, I'm going to request $20,000 this year. I hope you will see fit to give me what you can. We're excited about this increase in Upshur County, and I hope you are too. Do you have any questions?
How far out into county do you get?
We covered the entire county. The loop, the route van that makes a circuit seven times a day is just here in Buchanan. But our demand response is, is also called dial-a-ride. Call the day before, tell us you live in Adrian, wherever you live, French Creek, and you need to come to the doctor tomorrow, and we'll get you there.
Did you do something different this year to increase that to 11%, such as getting knowledge out to people, to start?
We, we continue to do that. We do that any way we can, all the time. I think that you just have to keep spreading the word, and grassroots is the best way to do that. For instance, we, we haven't been to the FRN in many years. We saw Mr. Brady at an FRN meeting recently, and I was surprised by the people at that table that didn't know that we existed, or what exactly we did, or that we could do as much as we can for them. So, we followed up. I want to introduce, this is Tracy Thompson. This is our transit manager, and she, she came on board last April. And she followed up then with some folks from that FRN meeting, and we were able to help several people who needed to get their children to daycare, to, they needed to get themselves to classes, to help better themselves. So, I think it's a grassroots campaign.
As far as your group, group, yes, it is.
Has fallen gasoline prices helped you?
Yeah, no, it's like, it's a breather, right?
Yes, it is.
The fact that it was up a little before that sort of helps us even it out. I'm glad you're saying.
And I'd just like to thank you for everything you do for the citizens here, because I know for the all the effort, young man, and working together as a group makes it better for everyone.
We're, we're really excited, I have to say, that Alan Cook and the staff of the senior center have been especially welcoming to us, and, and they are a big part of why this partnership is running.
Well, I'm on the senior center board, and I know that they were very excited to enter to that partnership with you, and it's worked out as a very, very good partnership. Everybody very satisfied with the service at this point, and I commend you for that.
Thank you.
We'll be putting our budget together in March, and we don't know exactly, at this point, we haven't got the final information from the assessor, but certainly, you know, we will consider your request.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your, your attending to this.
Have a good day.
You have a great day too.
Our next appointment is 10:15 a.m., 10 minutes, so we'll continue paying bills until that time. We now reconvene. We'll have a parent before us. David E. Godwin, Upshur County Prosecuting Attorney, who is appearing before us regarding the employment of Kelly J. Cunningham, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, salary matters. Do you wish this to be before a executive session?
Yes, I'd like to have a brief conversation with you prior to your vote and approval.
Okay, is there a motion to, to move to executive session?
We move to executive session.
Executive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. We'll now move to executive session, per West Virginia Code, Section 6-H9-HA-4. We are now back in session from executive session, and no decisions were made. I guess the first thing prior to this, we should take on item number two from the approval discussion action. Item number two, which was deferred until after our executive session, was the resignation of Kelly J. Cunningham, County Administrator, effective January 31, 2015. Do I have a motion to accept that resignation?
I'll move to accept that resignation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. And we will miss you, Kelly. I know you're going to be in the same courthouse, just four below us, but for myself, and I think I can speak for the entire commission, we really enjoyed our relationship with you the last several months, and understand the motivations and reasonings behind your request to resign, but you will be missed. You were here for a short period of time, you'll be missed.
I appreciate that.
You gave very good, cogent, and exceptional professional service to us, your recommendations and your oversight of the various responsibilities, and felt very comfortable with you as county commissioner, or as county commissioner. Maybe someday, county commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve as county administrator.
I wish you appreciated.
It's been a great experience.
I wish you appreciated what it bore.
You know, that 16-plus years, but sick of being an attorney, but 16 years of being a prosecutor's, it had been in there too hard, a little too hard to get out of the system.
And I will concur with JC. You will be missed here, and I just want you to be happy.
Thank you.
And I think maybe with the smile I've seen on your face the last couple of days, knowing that you know what I mean, you was going back to really what you want to do with some changes being made, I hope I see the Kelly Cunningham I seen when you first began. I do want to wish you the best, and if there's anything I can do as being a county commissioner, please ask. If I can do it, at least don't think on it. Young man, do it if I can. You will be missed.
And Buddy saying that he remembers when you first came shouldn't make you feel old.
Well, I was going to say, I'm a little bit older.
I didn't say when that was.
Because he was here when I first started, 35 and a half years ago.
You just had to put that out.
Kelly, we didn't get along at work together, but attending the meetings and watching you perform, we are going to miss you.
I appreciate it.
And I wish you well. Thank you. We have that letter from David Godwin. David, January 16th, recommended to Kelly J. Cunningham he hired to fill a vacancy of Assistant Prosecuting Attorney in that office. That's a request originating from Mr. Godwin. Do I have a motion to approve that request?
So, no.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Congratulations, Kelly.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you, David, and getting, getting a fine Assistant Prosecutor.
Yeah, well, right now, any assistant prosecutor do, I haven't experienced a violent , didn't I?
Well, you're gain definitely our disadvantage at this point, but we have to go through the process again, and we'll see how that turns out. But we have, we've been able to serve by our good Assistant Administrator.
I was going to say, you'll be just fine with this.
I think so. I think so as well.
Yeah, she has done a fantastic job.
Absolutely. Made my job so much.
Well, you're a perfect team. I mean, really, both of you worked well together and kept us aligned and provided us with the best of recommendations and the best of your knowledge and expertise.
She's an incredible young lady, very bright and very capable of doing what's been going on up here, because she's been invaluable to me.
Well, that's what we saw in her when we hired her as Assistant.
I, you were, did a very good job, by my sense.
Okay. Well, that being said, there is nothing but bills to do, I think, the rest of our budget, so we'll just be paying our bills.